At this time I'd like to call the Lee County Board Supervisor, Director of Media, April 21st, 2015, to order departmental reports. Building Inspector, Mr. Keith Harless.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. The report for the first quarter of the year 2015, I think in your packet they put the permits that was sold this past quarter was 56 permits that were sold. We had 237 field inspections and five violations. We had, we got 14 less permits sold this quarter than last year's quarter, but we've had an increase of 47 percent in fees collected versus last year's quarter. So, and that's due to the new rate increases that we implemented and we've had few to no complaints about those fees. So, it's looking promising. Also, this past quarter, we, you know, we had the major snowstorm and did over 150 property assessments. And I'm gonna try to get some information out to the public so to encourage them to come in and get a permit for the repairs that they're doing. I'd say probably 80 percent of the failures I saw was due to under construction and it was built without permits and had failures. So, hopefully if they come in and get their permits, it's for their safety and hopefully it won't do it again the next snowstorm and everything. So, I'm gonna try to just get some word out to the public either through the paper or other internet on my website and stuff like that. And also be aware that in July, the state of Virginia is implementing its new Virginia codes. We're leaving the 2009 codes. We're gonna start implementing the new 2012 codes. Virginia's behind, so. But this is gonna also do little changes in the building. And I'm trying to work with my contractors and homeowners also to let them know what the change is gonna be. That way when, you know, you come up for a field inspection, we won't be turning them down, you know, because they're not aware of the new codes that's came into effect. And this past week, we had a, an ISO building department evaluation. What that is, they come in every so often and give the building department a rating on how well it's certified and how it's performing its job in inspection. And they go back and they take that rating and they implement it and it can affect the homeowner's insurance. It's basically like your fire department ISO rating, but, you know, they do a rating for the building department. I was unaware of a building department, but I knew we had the fire department in our building. But I'm waiting for their report back for it to kinda see how we can make things better and get that rating high. Anything else?
You said they're using the 2012.
Yeah, we're actually using 2009 right now.
Is that something that the whole state is using the 2012?
On July 1st, yeah. The whole state of Virginia will start implementing 2000, the 2012 codes.
Mr. Harless? Schmose, are you aware, what's some of the big changes?
Some changes is gonna be decks. They changed the weight load to decks from 20 foot, 20 pound square foot to about doubled to 40 pound. And the reason a lot of that is for they've had a lot of deck collapse across the state. Majority of deck collapse are at college campuses where, and, you know, people tend to congregate on decks and they're, they're just failing. They, they take, they enjoy their outdoors, I guess, on campus. I'll try to not think about that for my daughter in college, but, but that's one of the issues that's probably gonna be a little tricky. And it's, I don't really wanna blindside the contractors or something. I've been working with the suppliers, building suppliers. They're actually the ones that come in contact with the contractors before I would. And so, I'm working with, you know, like Flunnershop, Myers, Myers and the Western End with them. If I can let them know, then they can pass that word around a lot quicker than I can.
Keith, do you periodically check with the contractors to update them? I mean, the main contractors in the county on, on anything new coming down?
Do I check with them? You mean as in, like, do I talk to them or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I try to. About a lot of them, a lot of them are my friends or something and I'll call when this, like, today I'll, I'll see something that, you know, I've learned that is wrong and then I'll warn them or something like that. Then I, like I said, I've been going to the building department to let them know, but by that time, even if I see them out on the weekend, they're asking me, you know, any time they see me, I don't care to talk to nobody, as you all know. But I try to just let them know ahead of time sometimes.
A lot of times it's not, nobody's trying to be hard or difficult, it's just for people's safety.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, you know, I've, I've, I've been on the other end of it, but, you know, the problem is, is not problems is, I'm not saying they're problems, a lot of people like to do things yourself, homeowners, and you can't blame them trying to save money. And they're just not aware of all the codes. And then when you show up, you know, you're gonna catch them and then they tend to get mad at you or something because they've had to waste some money, you know. This is hard lessons to learn, you know, but if they would, and that's probably one of the things that this past class is, plan reviews. And we don't implement that here in the county like they do other in the state, but if the homeowner or contractor, anybody's rebuild house, if they would just bring in a set of plans, we can sit down together and go over that before they even start building, that could save them money, you know, in case they may use a two by six where it calls for a two by eight, you know, or something and you'd hate to have something framed up and then I come out and say, "That's not gonna work." So, I'm gonna try to encourage that a lot more. Actually, by code, we can implement that, but I don't think we can need to at this stage probably. I meant cost of manpower and everything, but I think we're, we're at the size that we can work through this though with no problems. Just the, a lot of, to the homeowners, they just don't, they don't want to get a permit. They think that their taxes is gonna go up because they get a permit or it's gonna be a hassle to get a permit. But, you know, actually, like you said, we're just trying to protect them really.
Keith, there were so many of these aluminum buildings that fell due to the snow. Is there a code on those that these people should obey, that they're, did not obey when they put these buildings up?
Well, Lee County is, we're in a unique area on snow load. They do snow load square, per square foot, snow load. And where we're at, around the Appalachian Mountains and the Cumberland Gap there, that little gap, it kinda, our snow overload rating is like at 20 pounds per square foot. After all that we had, I went back and did some calculations. When, when the snow is so deep and it melts down to ice, then you get more snow on top of it. We was close to probably about, some of my figures was close to about 30, we was at 38 pounds a square foot. And that's why you saw a lot of these flat structures, buildings, they'd actually dropped, you know. We had some O'Reilly's buildings, actually, they had a main beam that dropped seven inches. But, you know, the building was engineered to our code here in this district. As you go further north in Virginia, we'll go from like a 20 pound snow, you know, further north you go, it'll go all the way up to 40, 50 pound, you know, even more up into higher United States, you know. So, a lot of this, they met the code, but that was this kind of a unique thing, you know, that was, you know, bizarre storm that we had really and it was just a real good one. But the carports, you know, they were rated for the 20 pound snow, but it's just that, and some of them are not placed the level, you know, some of them are in their yard and then the bottoms are kinda spread, you know. They're engineered to, you know, in a factory on a flat concrete, you know, surface and a lot of people just don't have that. And even some that was on concrete surface collapsed, but, you know, they can, they come back with, you know, everything's engineered to precise and if it goes over that, that's just gonna create failure, so.
Thank you, Mr. Harless.
All right, thank you.
911, Alan Bailey.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Before I get started, I have a sample graphic to hand back to you as part of my report. To start off my report, would like to go over the total numbers of calls that came into the dispatch center for the month of March. Was 5,281. 550 of those calls were 911 calls and 388 of those calls were wireless 911 calls. The vendor, Entrado, which handles Lee County's call processing equipment, has recently upgraded the current system with the new texting to 911 feature that was previously approved. Currently, this feature is not yet active as Entrado is scheduling training dates for all the jurisdictions involved with the Southwest Virginia Group Standards Committee, which is Dickinson County, Wise County, Lee County and the city of Norton. At the completion of training, the cell carriers of Verizon Wireless and AT&amp;T Wireless will be notified of our ability to utilize the new function. The Southwest Group also has come up with several inexpensive advertising ideas for informing the public of the new texting to 911 feature. One option, the purchase of a billboard advertising is expensive and has to be approved per locality. The cost of using the billboards is about $430 per billboard per locality. The decision to fund a billboard for advertising in Lee County is up to you, the board. However, no word has been received as to which billboard the company would allow to be used. And the sample graphic that you have before you has a lot of the information, but there would be some that would be altered for within Lee Countyans. It would no longer have like the Wise County number on it, it'd have Lee County's number. Talks are still ongoing between county offices and state agencies about possible future ideas for the county radio system. The county's current radio system is an old Motorola radio repeater that can no longer be serviced due to parts no longer being available. Motorola, which is the manufacturer of nearly all the radios being used by county offices, no longer manufactures low band radio repeaters like what the county is currently using. Recently, a meeting was held with VDOC to look at the radio configuration they are currently operating on to see if a system is favorable for the county's use. After the winter storm, my office has been notified that numerous 911 road signs have been damaged and need to be repaired or replaced due to scheduling conflicts and the weather, sign work has not been able to commence. I'm hoping for the end of the month to have everything done that has been brought to my attention. And the final topic is a request for additional funding to my departmental budget for the part-time dispatchers. Currently, the budget for part-time dispatchers is $1,521.39. The last pay period for the month of April is expected to use all of the remaining funds. Personnel changes in dispatch require training of a new dispatcher and scheduling accrued time off that is causing a shortage of personnel. A lack of part-time personnel leaves the department understaffed to meet the demands of emergency communications as well as administrative tasks. Therefore, I request $6,000 in part-time funding to hopefully push through to the new fiscal year.
Hold the way budget for that, John?
Budget, $20,000. $20,000 for it.
We're gonna do, we've got too many days off, it's gotta be covered and everything. Make motion we approve $6,000, a request for additional funding for part-time dispatchers.
Second.
Motion second, out of favor.
Aye.
Any discussion? That's carried.
He was talking about the radios. Does this all mean that we need, will need to replace all radios in the?
Well, right now, it's just the, the main radio repeater that all the broadcast transmission, it comes from off the Hunter's Gap Tower. I'm not exactly sure of the age of the radio, but our vendor, Two Way, has said that, yeah, it's, it's exceeded its end of life and, you know, from where Motorola no longer makes radios like that anymore, we're having to look at a different vendor altogether for getting a radio.
One of the topics that's been ongoing in this is low band versus high band. And regardless of the push toward high band, and we are high band capable, they have the ability to, to communicate on high band, but to run high band for police service, it would require probably three more repeater stations than what we've already got in the county, which would be very expensive. The low band actually works much better in this area. It gives you better coverage in mountainous area because of the way the radio waves will drop into the deep valleys and high band will just skip across it. So, that's the reason we look, VDOC has a configuration, I think with a duplexer, and we went up on the mountain, we actually had them go out to different locations in some of the far extremities of the county and had them transmit so we could see how well theirs was covering that area. It was very good. So, we're still looking at, you know, making a change, trying to get an additional tower in the western end. We'll be applying for an extension on that ground again. So, hopefully we'll be able to continue with that. Now, eventually, we will need to upgrade radios in all cruisers as well, but hopefully we'll be able to get some grant funds to assist us with that when we're ready to go on that end. But as Alan said, the current move on Hunter's Mountain or Hunter's Gap, the other, there's a second thing that there will help us. Our equipment right now is in an old, just a metal building, no insulation, nothing. It has extremities of heat and cold continuously and that's not good for radio equipment. Once we get it moved into the state police building, it's a concrete vault, it's temperature controlled, so extremes in heat, that, that should extend the life on some of that equipment. But the way it's set up up there now, it's just a, it's a tough environment for equipment like that to operate in.
When is that change over gonna happen? I mean, we've been talking about this.
Well, the state police, from what I was told from, from David with Two Way, is that they have installed the antennas and put in the cabling. There was still, one component that still hadn't arrived, which is the connectors for finishing up, as far as I know, still hadn't arrived. But as far as I know, the antennas and the cabling are on the, the tower itself, it's just a minor of trying to finish up the wiring inside. And then it'll be coordinating with the, the radio vendor and Verizon for switching it over, which should take.
When is this supposed to happen?
Hoping within probably next few weeks, to be honest.
I hope by the next time we have you come before, it's done.
Yeah, so.
Oh, it should be. The, there, there was some miscommunication in ordering the first round of, of the antennas and the equipment to be exchanged. And this was done between our service rep, our radio rep and state police. They had everything ordered, he got in and then state police said, "Oh, that won't work. You gotta change to something else." So, they had to send all that back, reorder the equipment. I'm just, you know, I'm on camera, but I'm glad state police response out on the highway is much faster and better than it is, than what we're getting in the communication line. So, it, it's taken some time just getting through all those channels to make this happen. But everything is moving now. It's just like you said, there's a little bit of, there's one or two pieces of equipment that's still yet to come in, but it is on order, it should be in, you know, within the next couple of weeks hopefully. And as soon as that's done, they should be able. We are so dependent on them. It's not our vendor that installs this, it is the state police vendor that has to install everything on their tower. They will not let our people on their tower. So, we have to coordinate that all through them.
Yes. It's not just a matter of getting it done, I mean, it's a matter of officer's safety. I mean, the better communication, the better ability that we have with that repeater to communicate with officers out in the field and fire and rescue, I mean, it's just a safety issue. Seems like we've been dealing with since one on four years trying to get this thing accomplished. So, hopefully, we can get this thing done.
Schmose? Mr. Slate?
Well, excuse me, I do have, when are you gonna get back on the signs?
I'm trying to schedule some dates with my vendor right now. I left him a voicemail just today. I haven't heard back from him just yet, but I'm hoping within sometime this week or maybe some, some days next week to get out and really start cracking on getting these signs put up.
You will give me a call in the morning. I've got a sign that we need to get replaced that I don't have on the list, I'm gonna bore you with it tonight.
That's important too. I mean, to, to piggyback on Mr. Mosley's comment, I mean, if some of these folks aren't familiar, you know, with the new names of roads and they're trying to respond to help our citizens and they can't find the road or can't get to them, then sometimes it's life and death. The repeater that you're using now, when does it need to be replaced? When does it need to?
Yeah, I know, it probably need to be replaced now, but.
As quickly as we can, really. I'm not exactly sure of the true age on it. I think it's, what, 12 years or older?
I'm not sure on that one. The antennas will help tremendously, moving, moving, having new antennas and cable. The antennas had not been replaced in probably 30 years when we had the discussion on the mountain the other night. Repeater is much, much newer than that. So, it's, a lot of the issue right now is just the age of the antennas. And you may not think that, you know, an antenna sticking up in there deteriorates, but it does. So, that'll have a lot of the issues.
Well, how much money are we looking at?
I don't know on the cost of the repeater itself.
I had some figures, but that was a few months ago, but I can't remember them right off the top of my head.
Until we resolved the issue on whether we were gonna stay low band or go high band, there wasn't a lot we could do, but, I mean, the decision's been made pretty much, I think, internally at this point, we are staying with low band, so we'll probably do a configuration similar to what VDOC uses.
Schrumpf? Thank you, Mr. Page. Extension office, Ms. Gina Mills.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You should have a packet in front of you reflecting our quarterly reports for all our employees except Ms. Harless, who is off on sick leave and she wasn't able to complete her, her report. I'll just briefly go over a few highlights and then I wanna talk to you about the other sheet that I gave you.
Was there any extra copies? I don't know, Ms. Mosley?
Right here.
Oh, sorry. There should be a single sheet and then the packet. Ms. Fannin, Air Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent helped the emergency coordinator, Mr. Bailey, with some of the after the storm agriculture damage and the estimates that she got together was estimating damages to farm structures and that type thing is approximately $1.7 million felt by the, that's, that is an estimate, that's not an actual, you know, going out and evaluating those, but it was, it is a rough estimate based on what people reported to, to the office and pictures that were, were taken. On March the 12th, she did a program with the Daniel Boone Soil and Water about a weed wiper workshop and there was 32 participants in that. She also did a tobacco gap workshop, which is required for all the folks who have contracts with the tobacco companies. She also, she's working with the 4H livestock club and they competed in a, the regional Stockman's contest on March the 8th. There was 15 total youth that participated in there and that tells you more about what they did. Also, the Block and Bridle Stockman's contest at Virginia Tech. Robbie Burchett from Lee County placed seventh overall in the individual contest. And again, the, the details are in your packet about what they did in that competition. And on the 31st, she did two apple grafting classes at the office with 12, 12 participants. And that's down a little bit. There's usually more people that participate in that, but it's always a, a good program. Under the 4H program, Sheila is working with, she did two presentations or two programs with the youth. There was 75 in one and I think 96 in the other. She took the Fatal Vision program and it's where the kids get to wear the, what they call the drunk goggles and they get to see, you know, how things look from that perspective and, and that kinda thing. They don't drive anything or anything like that, but they get to walk around and do that. And of course, you know, they like, they like that. She also did volcano presentations at Flatlands and that fits into the science SOLs in the, in the schools. She had planned to take a group, as she does every year, to 4H stay at the Capitol, but because the weather was so bad, they had to cancel that, that trip. And she also did a, a school enrichment program with Janice Eldredge's classes at Johnson Middle School about the proper hand washing and she did the glitter bug type thing. If you've never seen it, that's, that's always interesting for the germs to glow in the dark, so. Under my report, just some highlights, we finished our quilting class that we started in the fall. We finished that, I think, in January or early February. I've been doing some crochet classes, also some home composting workshops, also did a program for the regional AARP meeting in Big Stone Gap. Done the spring safe canning classes, did pressure canning and water bath canning. We're gonna have sewing classes in July and also a rug weaving class in May. One thing I went to highlight was the drinking water clinic that's coming up. We're doing that in conjunction with some folks at Tech and folks who are interested in having their, their drinking water, their home drinking water analyzed. I think there's 14 different components that they, they test those for. We're gonna have a meeting at the extension office next Monday night at 6 o'clock. Anybody interested can come. The cost of the testing is $49, but the, the normal price that you'd pay for these same tests is about $300. So, folks can come and find out what, you know, how they need to collect, make the collection or whatever. And then we will collect those samples on May the 6th and take those to Virginia Tech to be tested. So, it's a, they test for chloroform, ECOA, a lot of the hardness, the minerals. So, it's, it's a good, we've done it before and the price always varies depending on how much grant money that they have. So, this time it's $49, which is a little bit steep, but, you know, it's, it's a, it's well worth that.
What time is that again?
6 o'clock. Uh-huh. 6 o'clock, Monday the 27th, at the extension office.
So, can I, can I, if you just?
Sure.
If you want to participate in that, come next Monday to get information and don't bring your water.
No, don't bring your water next Monday.
Okay, you'll be.
We'll tell you how to, how to collect it. And there'll be specific bottles and that type thing that have labels and all that, that type of thing on there.
Then bringing the water back?
On May the 6th.
On May 6th.
Yes.
Is it been timed as well?
It'll be 8 o'clock in the morning, I guess, through probably 9:00 or 9:15 or whatever, because we have to get them early and, and get them up there in a certain length of time, so, yeah. But if they're interested, they need to call really and let us know that we're coming because if we have a really large crowd, we're gonna have to meet somewhere else besides the office.
And if a person can't be there on the next Monday, but they do want to participate?
We can work something out with them, yeah. We really need to go over the information, but we can do that. We can do that. We would prefer to talk to 20 people at a time instead of 20 individuals, 20 different times or whatever, but.
Or is, you know, someone who works for you, she wants to participate, can't?
Hopefully, they could, you know, send somebody else in the family or whatever, but if not, we can, we'll accommodate them. Sure.
Thank you.
And the last thing that I wanted to talk to you all about is the Junior Appalachian's Musicians, the jam sheet that I gave you. This came to my attention through Ashley Seals, the tourism director, when she and I were having a discussion about, I had applied for a grant through Virginia Tech to try to purchase some instruments to start an after-school program for young musicians. And since then, I've not received that funding, I was turned down for that. But she gave me the information of these other folks who are involved with the Crooked Road and they have already started this program, the Junior Appalachian Musicians. And so, we're working now, I'm working with the folks in Abingdon. And so we're working now, I'm working with the folks in Abingdon, to try to get one of these sessions or one of these classes started here. Wise County currently has three. I think Dickinson County has one, Scott County has one, and they're going to add another one this fall. And then Floyd County already has one, and Smith County and Washington County are going to start new ones. And so I, I was very, you know, excited about the opportunity to, to talk to them about this and what they have, what they told me, and they sent me some information and things. So I have applied for another grant to see if we can get funding for this. But I just wanted to make you all aware of what we're, you know, after and what we're trying to, to accomplish. It would be an after-school program, about two hours, one day a week. And the students would come to a central location, and there would be teachers there who could teach them guitar, fiddle, and banjo. They'd also receive instruction in traditional dance, maybe some, you know, things that, along those lines that would tie back to our heritage and our culture. Vocal lessons, you know, that type of thing. You can kind of branch out there. And I'm following the, the example that they gave me of these other programs that are working. The initial cost, the first year, the, the instruments would be the biggest thing. And these students, you can have anywhere from 25 students up to 50 students. And the, I think the cost of the, the instruments were, was anywhere between $5,500 and $7,500 estimated. And so that would be the, the biggest cost the first year. And then there's also, there's a sample budget in it, whatever. But what I'd like for the board to know is that we would, we would love the opportunity to, you know, for somebody from the board or Mr. Poe, whatever you all decide, to be, serve on an advisory committee to help plan, you know, should we get this grant? That we need to start planning it, you know, and start it in September when school starts back. If we do not get this grant, then we're going to need to meet anyway and figure out where we're going to get some money to do this. Because I think this is a really good opportunity. I've already talked to Mr. Carter and the school system. They're, you know, they're in. So I just wanted to make you aware of what it is. It's, it's a really a good program. And there's a little video on the website, about a four-minute video, if you wanted to watch that and, and see what the other counties have done, you know, and how it's affected their children. And again, it all ties back to SOL and, and that kind of thing. But I'm interested in it, too, because it is going to help keep our heritage and our culture alive through the, through the younger generation. So if y'all have any questions about that or anything else that I've recorded on.
Ms. Mosley?
No.
Ms. Slim? Sure?
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
The next out of Mount Gina is Constitutional Officers Treasury Report. Didn't give them a copy in equator. This time we open the floor for public expression. Anybody that'd like to address the board, you've got three minutes. Come up here and talk to us however you want to. Got one? State's name and where you're from, please.
I'm Lawrence Freeman. I represent the State Committee of Community Center and School. We've been searching for the deed ever since y'all turned the letter over to us, and we cannot find it. Does the board know where we should find it? Do you know?
What he was saying, is it not provided to them?
I was trying to think. Somebody come in the office and go.
We, we provided the original and see, we, we turned it over. We were, Mr. Slim contacted us about recording it. And I said, well, that's the buyer's responsibility to record the deed.
Okay. The letter that you gave me is the deed?
It wouldn't have been a letter. It would have been an actual deed.
It was not no deed. It was a letter that I got here that night. I think if I'm never correct back in November.
And then we went down to my office and signed it.
Pardon?
And then we went down to my office and signed it.
Okay. We'll, we'll check our record if we kept a copy. Okay. We'll check our records in the morning. But I'm certain the deed, I mean, we've already completed the transaction. Who's got the original? I don't know.
Okay. Because I turned the letter over that I got here that night. That, I think, Mr. Calhoun drew up or someone drew up. I turned it over to them, and it doesn't say anything about the deed.
Okay. We'll check. First thing in the morning. We'll check on it first thing.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Riddings. I'm just concerned with the development of our area and the cost concern. Mainly the roads, and like everyone was talking about, the harsh weather that we had. My husband and a neighbor went in together and bought a skid loader. And due out the six-year program, it's been going on in Dryden Heights for 20 years, and our road's not had anything done to it whatsoever. We're never dug out. We're never secondary road. We have to make it out the best we can. And without the skid loader, the ambulance wouldn't have got through to our neighbor. So my proposal and my deal is for three different things. County costs. I understand how important that is without costing the people more money. Use our resources. Use our prisoners. We house them. We feed them. We clothe them. Let them help do the work. Give them money for their commensary accounts. If we're going to house them, give them the freedom to get to work on the Powell River Road. We have a little boy up there that's paralyzed from the knee down. He's in a wheelchair, confined. He loves the river. And only thing we got is a boat dock that Dean Shatford and, and resources had put in several years ago. It's never been maintained. He's unable to get down to it because of the shape it's in. The prisoners could clear it out, make it more of something to relate to for relaxation. And it costs county very little. The county could also use the prisoners during the snowstorms to help maintain the secondary roads. And the county could also look into why the state doesn't give them the used equipment. If the county can't afford it, most states that own the equipment give it to the surrounding area counties. They owed equipment. Our money buys it anyway. So why not share it? When they, when the government stepped in and closed DOTs, they banned all the equipment. Most equipment is sitting there becoming rust buckets. Our tax money paid for that. And we don't need to have a state-county war. We need to have a state-county communication. And I'm sure we got people in the county that can operate the equipment. Why not share it? And get, because our road needs graded. And the six-year program that we owned our home for 22 years, and when we bought our home, we was on the six-year program, which was took away, and nothing's ever been done. And when Mr. Slim was elected over our District Four Committee, he has seen that we hate gravel on our roads. We are, we are totally neglected. And due to all the tax money, and in our area alone, they are 13 homes that you're looking at, just on two roads. That's just two roads. That's Kirkwood and Eaton's. That's not counting Cherry Tree and the rest of Dryden Heights at all. So I think we're entitled to a little bit of what our tax money goes for. I'm willing for our tax money. And I want our, I want our county to use what we have, our resources for development. We have the cliffs.
We have too many rivers in here.
We have, we have cave springs that could be used as camping grounds, you know? We could brain it in. We can brain in the revenue. Think of shopping. There's no one, there's no place in this area to go shopping, to buy clothes. You can't, I mean, your suits come from Walmart because they don't sell them. We have to take our county money, our tax revenue, and go elsewhere to buy them. Or we have to buy online. There goes your revenue. Our schools can't benefit from it if our revenue's going to other counties. Our children won't benefit from it. We need better restaurants and better vans for our kids to stay in this area and maintain a growth. Without that growth, we'll fall under the crack and become a dust town. And that's my main concern. I want our area to be developed. That's my wish above all things. Better industry. We got industrial parks sitting empty. You know, we look, we need to look into more identification for the companies that want to come in, make sure they're legit. If they're legit, they'll be LLC where they have tax identification numbers. They have some form that shows you they're really a legitimate company. And that's what we need to look at. Not be conked, because there are a lot of con artists out there. We can use the internet as a resource. If we can't afford the equipment, let's buy some used equipment. We can maintain it. And if you, if you set aside, you fixed one road in the beginning that 20-year program set out to fix, you start from the beginning. Well, that's going to last anywhere from five, maybe 15 years, depending on traffic area. When you get that road graded and fixed, that's, that's less maintenance the county has to afford. Less gravel, less time, less pay. You keep moving forward. You take what old bridges, the Swinging Bridge, because when you look at, in Tennessee and Gatlinburg, they had to start somewhere. And we got just beautiful mountains as they have. All we need to do is endorse them, just like Wilderness Roads. We need to announce that on, on the websites, get the attraction in this area, get the attraction to cave springs, get the campground set up. The campground does well in Big Stone for the races, and a lot of times for summer, recreational. People come where it's cool. We can do this if everyone just would work together instead of being archeonous. And that's what needs to be done. Need to be set upon and bound and determination to make it all come together and use the resources we got. Like I said, if we're going to house them, let them earn their keep, because we're housing them even out of this area. And that's unfair. And thank you very much, y'all.
Anybody else wish to address the board? Anybody? If not, we're going to close the floor for public expression. Next time Mount Gina does approval of minutes.
Chairman, in the first set of minutes, March 17th, if you look on page 13, the, if you recall during that meeting, we had approval of a change order number one for the transfer station contract. I quoted you the price that was texted to me by the engineer during that meeting. Ultimately, when the final paperwork came in, there were, there was a deduct on another portion of the project and a small addition in some of the grade work. The actual amount on that, instead of the $84,000, it needs to be $81,780.69. And I think it'd be best if we go ahead and reflect that in the minutes, so it matches what's in the contract.
It was less?
It was less. There, there was a deduct on the, on the roofing material for the building. And then we had a, it was $30,000. Then we had about a $900 addition for, a little bit of additional work with the sediment on the erosion sediment and, and the stormwater issue. We had initially, we got them the price that we thought we'll probably do it ourselves in-house. But when we saw the price that they quoted it for, Gary said he couldn't do it for that. So we went ahead and took their price.
Eighty-one what?
Eighty-one, seven, eighty, sixty-nine. There's actually a copy of that change order and all the supporting documentation in the back of your packet. You all requested to see it when we actually got it. That's the only change I know of.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, I guess, can we approve both sets mid, both sets of the March 17, 2015 regular meeting and the March 25, 2015 special call meeting with the correction in the change order as Mr. Poe's quoted.
Motion, here, second.
Second.
In discussion. On the paper, I, Poe, and then payroll. Can administrative reports of all payroll warrants have been issued? Approval of this person.
Motion, pay the bills, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, pay the bills, here, second.
Second.
In discussion. On the paper, I, Poe. Delegations, Aaron Reedhammer, Director of the Heart of Appalachia Tourism Board.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board tonight, and I'd like to say hello to Chuck Slimp, our esteemed board representative on the Heart of Appalachia Tourism Authority Board. I am Aaron Reedhammer. I am the Heart of Appalachia Executive Director. And for those in the room who are not familiar with our organization, the Heart of Appalachia Tourism Authority was created in 1993 by the state to expand, develop, and promote the tourism industry in the coalfield region. And I have provided a printout for the board members, if you'd like to follow along. There's no bouncing ball, but we'll walk through it. The coalfield region, of course, encompasses the counties of Buchanan, Dickinson, Lee, Russell, Scott, Tazwell, Wise, and the city of Norton. And the General Assembly created an organization to represent the tourism industry in the coalfield region because they recognized that we weren't being adequately represented by the larger mountain tourism region of southwest Virginia. And they felt that our story was unique and needed to be told separately, so they wrote legislation to create the only tourism authority in the state. And we are unique. We are unlike anywhere else in the state. We don't have an interstate running through our backyard like all the other regions, which is an advantage in some cases and a disadvantage in others. But while there are other mountain regions in the state of Virginia, ours are unique in the fact that they've given us an economy based on coal for a very long time, which has also given us a, a little more unique history and culture in this region than anywhere else in the state. And for those reasons, we have a different target market, where the rest of the Commonwealth relies on tourism from North Carolina, eastern Virginia, the DC metro area, even Pennsylvania, mostly because of that interstate system. We rely on tourism from Tennessee, Kentucky, West Virginia, and even Ohio. And that means that the vehicles that those, the rest of the state uses to market the region and bring in tourists, what works for them doesn't necessarily work for us and vice versa. So we have to use our resources very wisely. And why is that a big deal? Because as you can see, the travel spending industry in Virginia in 2013 is a $21 billion industry. And the Heart of Appalachia's piece of that pie was $166 million, which is great. That's an incredible amount of money we don't have to raise from our, our residents. Lee County has about $12 million worth of economic impact from travel spending, and we're working hard to increase that. Our 2014 number should be out from Virginia Tourism Corporation within a couple of months. So a year ago, we embarked on a very aggressive marketing plan that started with a brand-new logo and a new campaign that focuses on the two things that our area is best known for, and that's exciting outdoor adventure and relaxing scenic beauty. And we call it the Heart Rate Campaign. And you can see by the graphic, it is all the ways you can elevate your heart rate and relax your heart rate in the Heart of Appalachia. So our campaign uses very vibrant imagery, all the ways you can elevate your heart rate, riding ATVs, canoeing, kayaking, hiking, biking, rock climbing, horseback riding, even dancing. And then the Relax Your Heart Rate message is conveyed with pictures of fishing, tubing, scenic drives, overlooks, wineries, music, natural wonders. And the great thing about our region is we have something for everyone. We can appeal to the baby boomers. We can appeal to millennials, couples, families, single people. So we partnered with Virginia Tourism Corporation, VTC, and they've supported our Heart Rate Campaign to the tune of about $78 million in marketing leveraging grants. And with that money, we are starting our campaign with a brand-new website, very dynamic, very visual, lots of video. But the three main things that our website is going to focus on is a comprehensive list of things to do, all the ways you can elevate your heart rate and relax your heart rate. A calendar of events, which are your concerts, your special events at the Lee Theater, the... the raid at Martin Station, ATV drag racing, all the individual events that go on in the region. And all of that will be aided by a very interactive map. Because our region covers over 3,000 square miles. And that's hard for some people to get their head around that aren't familiar with the area. So if folks think they're gonna ride the Pocahontas ATV Trail and the Stone Mountain ATV Trail in the same day, they need to know that there's gonna be two and a half hours, three hours in the car between them. So the interactive map will help people who are trying to identify where they want to go based on what they want to do. If they just want to ride ATVs and go camping and listen to crooked road music, they can plug in those three things on the map and see exactly where they can do those things to help them decide where they want to stay. And the other part of our website, and those of you in Lee County who worked on the Lee County website, which was just launched last week, which is fantastic and a great resource for us. So congratulations on that. The other component to our website is we want it to be as essential of a resource to our residents as it is to our visitors. Because we know that a lot of visitation comes to our region because of family events. Reunions, weddings, graduations. And people are coming and staying with their family a couple days before or a couple days after that event. And the family who's here wants them to enjoy themselves and get out of their hair for a little while. So I'd like our residents, who are our best ambassadors, to be able to use this as a resource to suggest ways for their folks to enhance their visit while they're here. So we are in the final stages of that website. I can't wait to launch it. But in addition to that, the Heart Rate Campaign has been very successful with fulfillment pieces like the rap card I gave you all that illustrates the Relax Your Heart Rate and Elevate Your Heart Rate message. We've got a new visitor's guide in the works. Our print advertising has been very successful. And we're doing that in ways that give us leads. These are qualified people who say they want to visit the Heart of Appalachia region. So when they reach out to us, we provide them just the information they're looking for. We are going to be focusing a great deal this next year on digital marketing and social media, which are very exponential forms of marketing. And we're also working harder to utilize Virginia Tourism Corporation. Virginia.org is the state tourism website. They're getting over 10 million hits a year. And that's an important tool for us because every business across the state that's tourism-related has an opportunity to list themselves for free on VTC. So we're working hard to make sure that all of our businesses and restaurants and lodging and attractions are showcased on VTC to make sure that people recognize this as a really world-class tourism destination. And Ashley Seals, the tourism director here, is doing a great job. I have to give her a big shout out. She's got a wonderful brochure. The website is fantastic. As I said, it's gonna be a great resource for us. But she's also working on taking care of Lee County on Virginia.org, which is great because not all of our localities have a hands-on tourism person to pick up the slack. So the other initiative that we've been very successful with is the Appalachian Backroads Map. And Lee County was a great partner in this when we launched it in 2013. Very successful. There is a hotel in Norton that tells us, on average, they were booking about eight rooms a month before the Appalachian Backroads Map came out to motorcycle travelers. And now they're averaging over 50 rooms a month. And that's just after a year and a half of this map being out. So when we started to run out of the maps, we wanted to provide this economic benefit all the way across our footprint. So we expanded the map to include the counties that weren't in the pilot program. And the nice thing about this is we now have over 600 miles of great routes, great riding, scenic overlooks, the kind of things that motorcyclists want to see and do when they travel. They travel in packs, they have a lot of money. And this keeps them here for several days. So we're very pleased about that. And we appreciate Lee County's participation. Ashley helped us route some great additional roads in Lee County. So your exposure has been increased from the first printing. And we've taken our little long road. We did a motorcycle trade show in Washington DC. We did an outdoor trade show in Cleveland. And handed out thousands and thousands of pieces of literature. We are developing brand-new product. And you'll see a temporary fishing brochure that I handed out. We put this together to make sure we capitalized on every piece of tourism product we could for the trade shows. But we should have our final fishing brochure by May 1st. And looking forward to creating a whole new group of tourists. So our marketing plan, real briefly, in the future, will include things like a smartphone app, a tear-off map for lodging establishments to hand out with area attractions and points of interest. We will also be offering co-op ads, which helps defray costs and make advertising more affordable for our businesses in our localities so we get our name out there more. We are working to attract travel writers and bloggers because we are going after earned media just as much as we are going after media we have to pay for. And we're working hard to help other initiatives like the Clinch River State Park Initiative. We're very active with Curvy. Big Stone Gap is going to put us all kind of in the national spotlight before long. And we're looking forward to that. And that is an important component because what we do is we package the area as a whole package, the region as a package, because we're much stronger and much more attractive when we showcase everything together rather than all the counties doing it themselves. So that's a little bit about how we're marketing the area. The other part of our mission is to expand and develop. And we recognize also that getting tourists here isn't the end of the game. We want to make sure they have a good time while they're here, spend more money, stay longer. So we created a hospitality training program that targeted frontline employees and managers of businesses where tourists are, tend to frequent, which is your dining, your lodging, your gas stations, your discount stores and things like that, to try to make sure that we are friendly, we're making suggestions, we're engaging them, we're finding out what they want to do when they're in the area. The answer is not, there's nothing to do here. So we're working to train our hospitality frontline. And we are also creating opportunities for businesses to market themselves. We are kind of, we're working on a campaign to bring people to our visitor center in St. Paul more frequently. And when we have a chance to interact with them personally, we have a chance to get them the information they want so they can stay here longer and have a good time and spend more money. And we are also frequently the first stop for a potential entrepreneur who might be vacationing here, recognize a need for a service or see an opportunity where they can hang up a shingle and do the thing they've always wanted to do. So we make sure that we take that information and channel them through the entrepreneur pipeline and make sure that all of the roadblocks that might prevent them from realizing their dream are removed. Because their dream makes our tourism product stronger. And we also work to strengthen our businesses through helping them learn how to market, through helping them learn how to list themselves online, to reach out, to use Facebook. We're creating a marketing cheat sheet for our businesses. And I think that is going to be enormously successful. So the last part that I'll mention is community outreach. We have commissioned a traveling display case, which is right now on display at the Bristol Welcome Center at the State Line with our Coal Heritage exhibit. And that's been a wonderful tool and a conversation piece. It's brought a lot of interest into the region, folks stopping by our coal heritage sites as a result of just that exhibit. So I would like to answer any questions if anyone has any. But before that, I do want to say that it's, I always appreciate coming to Lee County because when I drive through Lee County, it's so beautiful and it's so well-kept. And I just applaud the board and the folks working for the county because the ditches are clear, there's not trash laying around. The buildings are in good repair. I don't see a lot of places falling down. And it's a really nice, wonderful place to market. And so I just want to compliment you on that. It's kind of the place where I think Mother Nature would take a vacation to.
Mr. President?
Thank you for all you do for not only Lee County, but our region. And as you stated, we're much stronger as a region than we are individually. And also thank you for giving our tourism director, Ms. Seals, a shout out. She's worked very hard on the pamphlet and the website in a very short period of time. And just, just thank you for what you do for our area.
Thank you. I think you do a wonderful job. This is great. It should increase as the years and months go by. I think we've got a bright future in tourism now that we've found a way to market it.
I think we hit a home run when we hired Ashley. And also, I think we hit a home run when we hired you.
Oh, that's nice of you to say.
And, but there is things happening in the region in tourism. And tourism is where we don't have to go to, I think, in this region. Industry is just not getting here. And tourism, we've seen its tourism come about here, don't you think?
Yeah.
Tourism often leads to industry, you know? People relocate based on a high quality of life. And that's the package that we're trying to put together, is a very high quality of life and a fairly low cost of living.
And the power of social living is a project.
I'm glad to work with Ashley. She's a great asset.
Ms. Rowan?
Yes, I thank you for the presentation. It was great to get my heart rate up just thinking about all the exciting things that we can promote here in Lee County. And I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a direct link from your office website to the county website where people can?
There will be on our new one.
On the new one?
Absolutely. And several of the options for searching the individual parks or lakes or things like that will direct right back to the Lee County website as well.
I think a lot of the things that Ashley highlighted in her pamphlet are really a part of our heritage and our history here in Lee County. And I think she hit that spot on too. So, you know, that's how people make it in tourism. They actually, their heritage is what sells a place. And I think you all have done a really good job with that, and I think she has too. We appreciate your effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment.
Sure.
One thing that stuck out in my mind was community outreach. We have, and I'm guilty of this myself, about some of the attractions we have here. If we don't educate ourselves about what we have to offer, then it's hard to offer it to someone else. But that's a good point.
Well, when I do a presentation, I sometimes ask, how many people have been to Trail of the Lonesome Pine? You know, 30%. How many people have been to Breaks Interstate Park? Same group. How many people have been to Pigeon Forge? And there's a breeze created by all the people raising their hands. So I think educating our folks on what we have here, because there are people traveling from all over the world to come here to experience this culture and this part of the world, the nature. And it's sometimes hard to see the forest for the trees. The folks who grew up in it don't recognize how special it is. So I appreciate your point.
I have, I'll tell you this. I have a friend who played in bands in Wise County back in the 60s and the 70s. He lived Wise County and went to Atlanta and played with one of the big bands, Atlanta Rhythm Section. And he has, in the last two, three months, he has posted pictures of Wise County bands from the 50s, I mean, from the 60s and 70s. And it's amazing, the talent that was in Wise County or here in the 60s and 70s. And that's not to say that the same talent is still there now. But this area, the musical talent that has come out of this area and is still in this area is amazing.
Are you ready to move back?
He's talking about a renewal, a get-together of his former band to come back together and do a tour. But.
Be in Lee Theater.
Yeah. I know, I thought about that. I sent him a message, said, come and do Lee Theater. But.
It always carries.
Well, I think what you, talking about Charlie, part of the heritage there and what Ms. Muddin was talking about, this jam, you know, maybe get some of the younger folks back involved in it.
Right. Because the younger people just don't have, I don't think they have a venue to play at. And they don't have a venue like they did back in those days.
Good, clean finance, what we're at.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next on my agenda is monthly appropriations finance.
Chairman, I make, once we approve resolution, monthly appropriations 15-010.
You got a motion here, second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? On the floor, aye?
Aye.
Posey?
That is for the Lee County Public Schools.
Supplemental appropriations.
Motion to approve supplemental appropriations.
You got a motion on the floor here, second?
Mr. Posey's correct. I know I'm asking.
For the best of my life.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? On the floor, aye?
Aye.
Next on my agenda, new business, board performance, IDA authority. Make a motion where you table this performance for next month.
Second.
Motion, second. On the floor, aye?
Aye.
Posey? Planning Commission.
Make a motion where we appoint Joyce Williams, Planning Commission.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor here, second?
Second.
Motion, second. On the floor, aye?
Aye.
Posey?
National Crime Victim Rights Week.
Chairman, that's a proclamation that's been requested by the victim witness advocate. Basically, in adopting the proclamation, would proclaim the week of April 19th through 25th, which is the week we're currently in, as Crime Victims Rights Week and affirm Lee County's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
We need a motion, second, approved.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second. On the floor, aye?
Aye.
Posey? Next on my agenda is Economic Development Fund appropriation request.
Further request from the IDA in your package. At their April 2nd, 2015 meeting, the IDA approved an appropriation of $5,250 to come from the Economic Development Fund. This would provide the required 10% match to contract with the land group for preliminary engineering for the access road at Constitutional Oaks Park. The IDA had obtained a $60,000 grant from the Tobacco Commission in 2013 to cover 90% of the preliminary engineering cost. And they are requesting go ahead and move forward with getting preliminary engineering complete while the grant is still in force. And again, there is a 10% required match, which the grant will cover 90% of the cost. They're requesting concurrence from the board supervisors to take those funds from the Economic Development Fund.
Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve this appropriation of $5,250.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, second?
Got to have a road in there. I said we've got to have a road to it.
Got to have a road.
Mr. Posey, this may be out of your areas of expertise. What's been done down there, I guess that would be just considered the entrance? would be just considered the entrance?
That is the entrance, that is the entrance, the actual road would have to be extended from the end of where the entrance was completed to the trail building that is there.
So this isn't for the road?
This is not for construction, this is for engineering, the preliminary engineering to have, basically, it provides you with preliminary engineering in hand, in the event that you get a prospect into the building, then you make application to the Industrial Access Fund for funding to complete it. Industrial Access Fund will provide up to 70% of the cost of construction of the actual road, once a prospect is in the building or preparing to take possession of the building. And I went ahead and talked to Mr. James, right now, the estimated cost for completion of the road actually is about $800,000. But if, if you get a client in there or a prospect in there, you've already got the preliminary engineering done, if you do not have the preliminary engineering already completed, then you've got to go through that process while you're trying to get the road constructed and get the prospect in at the same time. So this is basically trying to front load some of the requirements that you're going to need on the engineering side and have that in hand in the event you get a prospect, or land a prospect, I won't say have a prospect, but actually land a prospect and they take possession of the building. And one reason for going ahead and moving forward now is because they do have the grant funds to cover 90% of the cost, if that, if that grant expires and this has not been done, then that, those funds revert back to them, or their grant reverts back.
Oh, is this something that we could get caught and have to pay back?
Pardon?
Is this something that we could get caught with and have to pay back?
No, this is just, not to my law, this is just for the preliminary engineering, I don't think it's tied to any performance standards.
The Industrial Access Fund that you mentioned?
Those are VDOT.
Okay, that was my question.
And, and the, if you did the math real quick, you'll note that there would still be about $240,000, $250,000 local share to be paid for that, we could seek grant funds to cover that cost as well.
Okay, you could seek grant funds for the other 30%?
Yes, they'll only pay 70%, but it doesn't, as long as you provide the other 30, it doesn't matter if you seek it through other, other forms of grants or whether it's purely local management. But we would not, we would not be seeking those until we have someone taking, you know, this land, this for the building.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, in a second, on the favor?
I.
I, opposed. Okay, Burn Justice Assistant Grant Award.
This is an annual grant, a small grant, but it is annual through Department of Justice, the grant this year would be in the amount of $2,148, it requires a local cash match of $239. The grant program allows the funds to be used in one of six different program areas, the sheriff's office typically uses these for prevention and education, doing things in the schools, things of that nature, and there is a copy of the grant award provided in your package, provide them with a total amount of funds of $2,387.
This is an annual, given for many years?
This is annual, yeah, as long as I've been here, we receive this every year.
Make motion to accept it.
Second.
Motion's second, on the favor, I, I, opposed now. Request for proposals for some CPA and audit services.
We have, our audit contract is up this year, and we've not been out for proposals on the consulting services in quite some time, so decided to put those both out this year, and to hope to get this out earlier in the year, and it seems like everything we tried to do in, from February to March, got snowed under, literally, so, these are out, proposals are due for the consulting services on April 29th, for the auditing services on April 30th. As soon as we receive those, I'll distribute copies of each, everything received out to each of the board members, and we will need to, you can go ahead and review those, and then we'll need to schedule follow-up interviews, assuming, you know, depending on how many we actually receive and how many you want to interview, so, we just need to try to complete this process by the end of May, so that they can be available to start work right at the end of June, they usually come in right at the end of the, of the month in June to do some preliminary work, and then come back later in, late summer, early fall. But that's more or less just to make you aware that this is coming to you.
Okay, Pool Employee Application.
Those are due on April 30th as well, we need to try to have the employees hired, at least know who we're dealing with, by mid-May, in order for them to start preparing schedules and get the cleaning and opening activities ready. Transfer station employees are currently, I've got here that they were planning some repairs, they've actually started those this week since we've had a little bit of dry weather, had, one, the bigger project is reanchoring the diving board, they're going to Gary's, we've been down there and looked at it, he's given it some consideration and thought, looked at a couple of different ways to design another cap, a steel cap, to help make that a little bit more solid, the platform that it's mounted on, so, he got that figured out now, he's got a design he's going to work with to do that. They actually, I think, started on the guttering and fascia board today, he's gone ahead, they've already got the fascia board down, I don't know if they got the new book, and he called me, that was seamless guttering before, and he didn't know if I wanted to do that or do the other, it's pretty simple, it's two, just two straight sections, I told him to go ahead and get pricing from local vendors on the seamless and have it made and be ready to put that up, and as far as we know right now, that'll be the major repairs to the bath house this year, unless we've got some plumbing leaks and stuff inside once we turn the water on, but they're gearing up to be ready to, you know, help get the pool set up and ready to go for the year.
You know, we probably need to look at, either putting a metal roof on that thing or something, probably the next year, because it's, I guess that roof's 20-year-old over, and it's showing some wear in places, so.
Yeah, it's probably about 22, 22 years old at this point, if I'm right on when I think that thing was constructed.
And Gary and him might just do a metal roof on that.
Well, at this point, we, we didn't think, I mean, as far as we know, there's no leaks inside the building, so we didn't want to get into a roofing project right now, but the guttering, it's, it's pretty well shot, especially with the snow and everything this year, what, what was already weak is really, it's got a lot of sags in it now, and we felt it was best, and in looking at the fascia board behind it, I told him, I said, just go ahead and replace that and be done with it, because we really didn't think we'd get a good, solid hole, putting new guttering up in that old board. But we will be monitoring the roof as well, and it probably would be, probably wouldn't be too, too difficult to do that, and whether they would have time to do it or not, I don't know.
They could do it today, it's easy work.
Well.
You could have that day, they're probably.
Oh, I doubt that.
Yeah, we give you that day off.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion for, Mr. Paul, go ahead and get a estimate on what it would cost to get that done, the roof, the material only, see how much material we're looking at, I mean, because as Mr. Bailey says, it is a fairly easy process to do.
It's flat, pretty flat, yeah.
Yeah, and I also would like to double up that motion that Mr. Bailey and Mr. Paul handle the pool application employees at their convenience.
I've got two motions on the floor. I hear a second, second, motion's second, on the favor, I, I, opposed.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Paul, if, if I'm to, probably made a six, it'll be my next day off, I can, and we'll do that together, how's that?
All right.
Okay, and next on my agenda is Kioka School Property.
The board previously authorized county attorney to prepare a lease agreement for that property to the Kioka Alumni Association for the board's consideration, the lease was to allow them access to the property pending their approval as a vital 1C3 nonprofit organization, it's my understanding that they now have received notification of their approval as a 501(c)(3), and we just wanted to confirm that you want to go ahead, rather than preparing a lease now, we just go ahead and prepare a deed for the property. There are a couple of outstanding issues with the property, the first one involves that little package sewer treatment plant that's on site, on December 19th of 2014, DEQ was notified of the status of the facility, basically, as you recall, the, we, we had the tank pumped and cleaned out, so there would be no additional discharge from it, they capped the inflow, and then magically, the tank rose out of the ground because of all the water that's flowing through that bottom. I did go up there and check it after the snow and near flood event that we had in February, March, I was afraid that it may have actually, the water level may have raised and pushed the tank higher and caused it to sever from the pipe connections, but it did not appear, it, I just happened to have my camera with me, and I had the old pictures that I'd taken, I first thought it had come up higher, and I got the camera out and looked at those old shots, and it was in exactly the same place, so, but DEQ is aware of what we have done, not had any follow-up comments or any additional comments from them whatsoever, so I'm assuming they're happy with that, as long as it's sealed off and not discharging anything. Second issue was just with respect to the use of a portion of the facility as a voting precinct, discussed this with Mr. Gullion and with the county attorney, and we feel like we can provide some kind of reservation in the deed for future use of this property, make you aware at the same time, since I'm telling you this, that in their budget request, the electoral board is requesting funding for a portable building similar to what we're using at Robbins Chapel, to be placed somewhere in the Kioka area as a polling site, and no reflection on, on the school or anything, but where it's not being used, there's no heat, there's nothing there, so it makes it a little bit difficult for them on election day to, to use that, that property, but what we, I add that in there just for the sake that we may want to also in the deed reserve, and I haven't talked with Mr. Gullion about this, because I didn't know until I got their budget request, but we may want to have something in there that should the board opt to go with a small building like that, a portable building, that they would allow us to set it somewhere on the property that's agreeable to everyone, don't think it'd be that big of an issue, so, we just need to know how to proceed at this time, whether to stay with lease or go ahead and go to full-blown deed.
Well, you know, we could use that money at busy time for that lease, what, a dollar, Mr. Gullion?
I'm prepared to take care of that. As far as the polling site, we've discussed that, and if we do, you know, if we do have the property, I think we can make it available, one of those classrooms and with propane heaters or whatever, that we could make it much more comfortable than what it was this year or this past election, and that would save the county the expense, and we're prepared to get started as soon as you give us a deed.
And I think, I mean, I'm assuming no reason why not, but make, I mean, we need to make sure it's a smallish fund that they're saying.
Right, and we can create a deed reservation for that, so, I mean, since the previous vote was a lease, we would need another motion for the transfer of the property by deed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we transfer the Kioka school property to the Kioka Alumni Association.
Second.
With, with the changes noted that, about the.
Polling session.
And authorize chairman to execute on behalf of the county.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor here, second? Any discussion? On the favor?
I.
It's not yours, make it, thank you.
Might get Mr. Sumter to chip in a little bit on that, yeah, lease there.
Can you give a pitch of sense, a new pitch of sense, that won't hurt you too bad, will it?
No, I, I think we.
Okay, reports and recommendations of the county attorney?
Definitely.
Reports and recommendations of the county administrator?
I have just a couple, one, you've been given a letter saying this, but I just wanted to highlight it, Commonwealth Transportation Board will conduct their public hearing, the annual public hearing, on the primary roads, six-year improvement plan, on May the 4th, this will be at 6:00 at the Southwest Virginia Higher Education Center in Haddington, this is a regional meeting that, that they have, so I'd like to make you aware of that, if any board members wish to attend, I'll probably make the trip over there, can't make a whole lot of input, but we at least wanted to make sure that what projects we have in there move forward. Just also to tell you, at the same time, I've been in discussion with Alan Sumter, the residency administrator for this region, and right now, we're planning to schedule the six-year plan public hearing for secondary roads at our May meeting, or just prior to the May meeting, typically, we do that at 4:00, so, he's already been in contact with me, but I was just waiting to make sure we have times and dates and everything set, but just provide that to you for additional information, but if you are interested in attending the primary roads meeting on May 4th, just let me know.
May 4th?
Yes.
On Monday?
Yes. It's a little bit odd that it is on Monday. I didn't look at their schedule, well, they've got another one in Midlothian on the 5th, and then one on the following Monday in Culpeper, all the others will have been done, but then they'll have already had six by the time they get to ours, you know, parts of state, so.
Well, maybe they wore down a bit, we can get more out of it.
I'll probably go with you.
Okay. And got an issue on the heat pumps at the Penning Gap Library Building, county owns that building, the library board is, they handle most of the life maintenance on the building and service and things like that, but they've had, they, without air conditioning last week, they contacted their vendor who does their service work, they're recommending that the inside unit, as well as both outside units, be replaced because of their age and mechanical condition, because the repair of all of them is going to be fairly expensive, but I have some information on that, also contacted RH that service vendor who visited the building today to take a look at it and to give us some, a recommendation and some options, I would like to discuss that with you in closed session just a little bit further, because I do have pricing, and I can't reveal that pricing until we have other quotes in, so that'll be an item that I'll take up a little bit later. Last thing, other than closed session, that I think I have for you, I plan to hand you the first budget draft tonight, I've actually still got one department that has not submitted the budget, and I'll probably do that one myself, we also do not have anything from social services yet, I'd expected it late last week, but we didn't get it, and also, we do not have anything from the school board yet, I have advised them of who our committee members are, and to preferably make the meeting on Wednesday, but I've not heard anything back from them, so, I do have the state estimate, but that's based on the average daily membership that they project, and usually our local board runs with a little bit, or for the past few years, they've run with a little bit higher number, because the state estimate has been off just a little bit, a little bit low, which means our local share will go up, I have pulled some numbers down on that, it's been made available, but we also, we don't, we've got estimates from the state compt board, that they will not publish final numbers until May 1st, I don't expect a whole lot of deviation, but there's still a little wiggle room there, I'd like to spend about another week getting things firmed up a little bit more, maybe a week, week and a half, and then have a meeting where we can be in a better position to really talk in reality about what our numbers are. I mean, really, I can go on the projections for education, but I won't know exactly what they're asking for locally, and social services, it fluctuates up and down a little bit every year, so that, that's only going to be an estimate as well, so hopefully, I'd have a more solid number to look at, and it'll also give me, a lot, some of the budget requests this year, more people, I think, push the window of time that I had given them up to the end, and I haven't had time, I've scanned through and I've looked for things that really pop out and catch my eye, but I haven't had time to get down into details on some of them and iron out just how much I can eliminate out of that, so, about a week, week and a half, we'll be better able to do more with that. Saying that, we're also, like I said, going to need to meet to deal with the proposals for consulting CPA and auditing services, so we may be able to incorporate some of that together, or we may just have to meet with budget a little bit earlier than that, but that's where we're at on that.
So we need to set a recess. So we need to set a recess date?
We will need some, uh, well, yes, we'll need a recess date to start and then we'll have several others. As you recall, uh, the month of May and usually at least the first half of June is meeting month, so don't schedule a whole lot, any week of that month, because we're, we'll be meeting quite a bit, probably. And, uh, I mean, we may have good fortune and be able to iron it all out and not have to meet a lot, but, uh, you'll get your break in July and August in hope.
What about on that Wednesday, May the sixth?
That would probably work.
I'll be up here anyway, everybody check your calendars.
For me?
What time?
Twenty twenty.
Mr. Crabtree?
I'm open.
Aye.
That sounds good.
I'll talk.
I don't know, I'll look. So, schedule it.
We'll schedule it.
Okay. I'll jot that down so we remember when we get ready to end the meeting. And, uh, other than that, that's all I have except for the request for closed session. Uh, I asked for that on the investing of public funds, uh, has to do with the hospital and the library and also legal counsel.
Report some recommendations of the board, Mr. Crabtree?
None.
Mr. Moser?
Uh, I'm happy to report that, uh, the bridge at Canecreek, most of you've been up toward Pennington, you, you've seen that they are doing some work up there and after six and a half years of working on that project, they're finally going to replace it. And, uh, that's been a big safety issue that has laid heavy on me because I know how many wrecks been there and anybody that lives around here knows, you know, that when you pass either a passenger vehicle on that bridge, you just cringe every time you go across it. And then you pass a big tractor or trailer, you wonder how you got by them, but, uh, the speed limit is reduced there and, and the citizens need to, right now, the road's going straight, but they're gonna, they're gonna be two sharp curves on, or a sharp curve on each side of it directing traffic away from where the bridge is now. And that's, you know, people need to be aware of that, need to be aware of the speed limit. Second thing is, I had a conversation today with, uh, the principal at the Career Technical Center, Mr. Welch, and there's a problem within our school system with dual credit classes. Uh, we have children sitting over there in, in these classes that are, some of them can afford it. The state pays eighty percent and, uh, I think the county pays ten, is that right, Dane?
I'm not sure.
And then the other ten percent anyway is left up to the individual student and it comes up to about forty-one dollars. We've got probably close to four hundred students that could be eligible for these dual credit classes. And, and what Mr. Welch has asked me to do, I think, you know, a lot of these kids cannot afford that forty-one dollars. And a kid, you know, Mr. Crabtree might be able to afford that, so he gets college credit. And I'm sitting here beside of him, I don't have forty-one dollars, I don't get the college credit. So, you know, it's, it's not fair and we need to see, Mr. Poe, if there's some kind of funding, grant or whatever, we can lay our hands on to make this equal for all students. I know this sounds like a, uh, a school board, uh, problem, but it's a problem of the county's to make the problem. And, you know, it's just not fair to some of these kids that don't have access to the finance to pay for that. And, you know, I'm sure they would take it, you know, they get the college credit for doing the same thing. And I would like to see, you know, some research done on that, ever how, you know, whatever we can do.
And that's something that social services doesn't pay? Really?
No.
So there's, you're saying there's kids in the same class sitting beside of each other?
Right.
And some of them are getting dual credit for it and some of them aren't, just because they can't pay the forty-one dollars?
Right.
And they're already in the class.
Right.
Hmm.
Kind of sad.
It is. I, I mean, but, you know, we've got one of the highest free lunch programs in the state, so, you know, that's just the way it is and, you know, with our economy being in the condition it is, uh.
Increased.
You know, we need to look and see how we can help these kids better themselves. That's all I have, just basically.
Charlie, we've slipped you. Sure.
I just have a couple of things. Um, Dane, I think that I talked to you before about Comcast and I've tried without success.
I won't say it.
I know, you told me so. Um, but I just wondered if you could follow up with somebody on that. My contact, is it still Russell Byrd?
Yes.
Because last time I talked to him, I think he was unsure on the direction, you know, that he would be in the change.
He was still our contact about three weeks ago when he sent me an email on something that he wanted to broadcast out to us, so, uh, communication unfortunately runs only one way a lot of times with them, it comes out, but it doesn't filter back in too well.
Well, there for a while, we were doing pretty good. You know, come time for him to, I invited him to come to a community meeting and also one of our, um, citizens had suggested that Comcast have an office in Lee County. Of course, I know it's not going to be Comcast anymore, but when we go in, into contract with this new company, do you think there's any way we could get, um, just a physical presence here in Lee County by this cable company?
It's doubtful. It, as with all utilities, they've pulled back. You know, they have offices in regions, not in areas anymore. They just, they, they've pretty much pulled them back. Uh, to be honest, we're probably fortunate that Old Minion still has a local office in Penning Gap, even though you can't get, I mean, there's limited, uh, work that you can get done going through that office, you have to go through the Norton office, but Comcast has had that office in Norton as long as I can remember. They've not had that office in Lee County and I, I just don't see them expanding it.
I think they have something at the mini-mall where they dispatch their vans out.
Okay, I'm not aware of that, because I know, uh, I, I returned a piece of equipment last week, uh, for a fan member and it had to be dropped off at the Norton office, that's the only place they can take it.
I think I've seen those Xfinity vans there.
They made, they made warehouse out of there, maybe with some parts and things like that in stock.
Probably.
Probably what they're doing, but if they don't have an office person there who can handle things, you know, to do billing or, uh, equipment receipts and things like that through their computer system.
Well, that's true.
It's not going to help. And I'm not, I'm just saying it's, it's doubtful.
You're right.
However it shakes out. And I don't know where they're at exactly in that merger, uh, it's actually a merger and a, and a breakup at the same time.
Right, yeah.
Uh, so, you know, it'll be a different company that ends, that ends up servicing the cable system in this area from the new Time Warner Comcast merger, but, uh, I'm not sure exactly where they're at, but like I said, as of about three weeks ago, I did get a, an email from Mr. Byrd.
We, we were communicating pretty good up until the snow and then all of a sudden I just quit hearing from him, so I didn't know what was going on. Um, but he did say that they could still check and see if those couple of areas that I've checked on, that they can tell us whether, um, new lines can be put there or not. So, if you would care to also try and follow up with that?
Try to follow up.
I would appreciate it. And, um, also, I'd send an email to VDOT, um, regarding the slide area of, across from the sewer plant in Pennington, um, that area, every time it rains hard, you have a slide, a mudslide there in the road. And I was just wondering if you would care to follow up with that as well.
Is that the area that they went in and actually, uh, took a cut out of that just a few years ago?
They did, they did some work and I just wondered if there, is there plans to do anything else? It would be good if they could just put up one of those nets to keep rocks from falling into the road. And also wanted to follow up to say, I should have asked Mr. Bailey, but, um, I think I had mentioned last month about the nine-one-one social media. I know back in the, in the winter, when, when we had the, um, big snow, would have been good, you know, if we had something then, but now we're into tornado season and if we, if we could have some kind of nine-one-one social media, if there was to be a tornado or something where we need some shelters open, I think it would be good if we could, we could get the word out faster that way. And that's all I have.
This stuff in here about, uh, CBS, what is that there? Uh, two CBS stations on the cable service.
Well, at one time, I guess they, they still just got, uh, they got two. One time, they had three when it was a delphi, there was actually three CBS stations you had to feed out of. Uh, you had, uh, WJHL, you had, uh, the Roanoke Station and then you had the station over Kentucky. I forget what town or city it originated out of, but you had three different CBS stations stacked there on cable. Uh, apparently there is a provision, uh, in, under federal law, that the primary station, the primary, uh, network affiliate in a region has priority and by their contract with them, they can request that other service providers be, uh, taken off of that cable system in that region. And WJHL has requested that action off Comcast, so they're in the process of removing, uh, either one or both of the other two CBS affiliates that they were currently carrying. So they'll be removing them by federal law as quick as they can. So, that's, that's what's happening there. I wasn't aware that that was enforced because I had seen the duplication before on there. And, uh, I know, I, I enjoyed, uh, when I was on cable having that Roanoke station because, uh, you could, you'd get some statewide news at certain times and, and watch things. At, at election times, sometimes I would watch races across the Commonwealth in, in localities over there. And then you had a few people who, uh, unfortunately were like Mr. Bailey and supported Kentucky and they got Kentucky basketball on, on that other Kentucky feed station, so they liked having that on the cable system, so we may hear a cry from some of those fans.
We used to get New York and I really miss that when they took, took that off the cable system.
Yeah. Usually they just carry the locals. Uh, if, if you're on satellite, you can get some of the national feeds of the New York stations, things like that. But, yeah, that's what's going on on the other, it's just, uh, it's legislation that allows the local affiliate to kick on that and they have, so that's going to knock the others out.
At this time, an entertaining motion going to executive session for investing in public funds.
I can motion going to closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-six and A-seven for legal counsel.
Oh, you're good at that.
Second, motion second, on the favor? Aye. Aye. Right, executive session. Aye.